...
... allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are going to adjourn this meeting at 5:45, so we're going to get through as much as we can before that time. Just to let everybody know, what would you please like to do on the consent agenda?
I move that we accept it as presented.
We'll have to second because I wasn't here for this.
All in favor?
I'm going to stay in your comments.
Yep.
Upcoming slideboard meetings Thursday, April 20th at 5:30.
Here.
Any slideboard comments, announcements? Okay, so let's break, move right into business item number one. Trinkin Brewing Company requests to amend ordinance to allow dancing and live entertainment in the business and commercial zone.
Kristine, were you able to get that stuff in on the access today?
Yes, there were reports that it's, they only have copies.
So there's a review of a draft ordinance change developed by the planning board to permit live music and entertainment.
Would you like me to explain or?
Sure.
Questions? So last week at your meeting, the owners of Trinkin came to and asked about a change in the ordinance to allow entertainment, live entertainment and music in the business and commercial. It's something that's now allowed in the urban development park. You suggested that they come to the planning board, the meeting was two nights ago. We listened to their proposal, we discussed it, we came up with some changes. There's small changes to the ordinance that will allow that. We put some restrictions on also and then some penalties for violation type of thing to go along with it. The board, we all felt that that would be adequate as far as preserving the communities where a lot of homes and businesses are intermingled in the business and commercial, which was originally sort of the fear of people of having live entertainment. The big thing is that there'll be no live entertainment or music after 9:00 PM, which felt like a decent hour. I mean, someone could have a party at their house until 11:00 and it has nothing to do with the ordinance, but it felt like it was adequate for now, it's something that we can definitely tweak later. We put some, I don't know, look at it to explain, so it's the... So we added to, I see the page, no, okay. So if you're looking at page 2 of 3, underneath Article 2 land use districts, if you go to page 2 of 3 at the bottom, it's actually number 8, I think, in the list. When I copied and pasted over the numbers in the show, but we'll fix that in the ordinance. The indoor and outdoor places for eating and drinking, the underlined with is an addition, the crossed out no is a deletion. So it reads indoor and outdoor places for eating and drinking with dancing or live entertainment permitted until 9:00 PM. If we look over to the right, next to the little P's that mean that it's permitted in the district, it is underneath business and commercial, we put the footnote 1. Footnote 1 unfortunately went to page 3. If you look at the top of page 3, it says see Article 3.15 for restrictions and penalties. And then right below that, we added what that would be. So under Article 3 land use standards, it's under the C section, which is business, commercial and non-residential use standards. I put 14 in there, which is existing in the ordinance, just for reference. So number 15 would read, "Live music and entertainment is not permitted after 9:00 PM. Violation will result in removal of the business's approval to provide live music or entertainment. Hosting live music or entertainment without approval will result in a $300 fine for each occurrence. A business may request reinstatement of approval for live music and entertainment six months after approval has been revoked." Obviously, this is something that Sally needs to look at, she's probably going to need to use the language a little bit differently. But it covered the timeframe, it covered if there are violations, and then it gave the business an avenue to get back if they proved to, you know, they were going to be following rules. So it didn't like get rid of their approval forever. It doesn't ruin their approval to be there, it doesn't ruin their approval to have beverage and drinks, it just takes away the live music piece. So if someone's out there running bands until 10 o'clock, they lose that, that ability. And it seemed to make sense, it's not a lot of words in here, but we did that for your review and discussion of solutions like that. And I understand it was very short notice, but with the warrant and everything, it seemed prudent to get the two of you in as soon as possible.
There'll be a hearing on this, this point of the...
Yes, there will be two hearings.
Yeah, in conjunction with all the rest of the warrant stuff, the same words and the...
We have to go on review of it too.
I do have some concerns over the timing, as it stands now, we would have to... The soonest we could advertise for it would be Monday, if you're looking at your calendars. We have to advertise two weeks ahead of a public hearing, which puts us at May 2nd, which is the Tuesday ahead of the informational session. So we would basically have a public hearing for the planning board Tuesday, the 2nd. Then in the informational session with the slideboard could be our second public hearing, two days after. And then that's two weeks ahead of town meeting.
So we can make it.
We can make it.
We can make it.
It's doable, it would be a marathon the first week of May.
Yeah, it requires two hearings and usually the informational hearing is the second one, and then the first one, the planning board does on their own.
So if there were any changes, I mean, obviously it's a very simple ordinance change. If there were any changes, the turnaround to have those changes made would be...
So would we send this to Sally and she knows to make changes?
Well, I'm just... It's still till a public meeting, it's...
I don't think running these simple changes to Sally is going to be an issue. It just depends if...
If we have any concerns from the community, we can, if it gets postponed, we'll just postpone it at that time in the future. We won't always have any hearings, right?
And there are two other land use related changes that can...
Can I just ask a question?
On this one, with the per... the permitted... How much time do you need? How general is the permission?
Oh, permission for that?
So if we, if this is granted, do, if, does, Trinkin have to do, if they're going to have a thing on Friday, do they have to have approval or is this likely approval for anything that, within the confines of the...
Oh, I see what you're saying, so for existing businesses?
They're not going to have, what I'm trying to say is, they're not going to have to get approval for every performer?
No, no, no.
So long as they end by 9:00 PM.
Right, and, and it has to wait until this goes into effect, so after the ordinance changes, then it will be in effect. But we won't make them come back for a special permit for anything and then anyone else new in town who goes to...
Yeah, right.
Then the other question I got is, if businesses booming and personnel is available and you decide to stay, if they decide to stay open until 10:00, do they have to come back and get an ordinance change or 10:00?
Well, the live entertainment would end at 9:00, the entertainment would end at 9:00 and they can stay there all they want. They just can't have live entertainment after 9:00.
And their plans to end early?
They close at 9:00. They actually asked for 8:00 and we thought 8:00 was a little early and we were comfortable with 9:00.
Okay.
The board, in general, so, yeah, I mean, they can be open until 1:00 in the morning, they just can't have any live music after 9:00 or entertainment.
It's good for government time to be perfectly anxious about it.
Yeah.
It seems to have a long time.
I've had a grandmother who had to go to sleep early.
There was a second one that provided the ordinances for...
Yeah, that took next, right, yeah, the next thing they've done it, well, that's fine.
Well, I think, I think we should cover the land use changes before we get to the marine resources.
Okay, great, so... Do we have the Trinkin on it, should we motion to?
I think we should wait.
Do most of them both.
Okay, might do both at the same time?
Yeah.
So the, the second one is the application deadline. We just changed this last year from 12 days to 15 days. The 15 days is being problematic as far as giving staff enough time to post the notices for the hearings. And so Carly asked for an extension, the board discussed it and we thought that three weeks was adequate. The postings for, the advertisements for hearings have to be 14 days before the meeting, so applications right now are due 15 days before, but they're coming in like at five minutes before 4:00, then they shut down. So it's really not enough time, we really should have made it farther than that. So the 22 days puts you another Monday before, so they'd have, yeah, so we'd have three full weeks. And that gives Carly a whole week to get everything together and do the do the notifications for any hearings that need to happen for applications for the planning board. And it's just a quick, I honestly, I took the one from before and I changed the numbers. It's the exact same sections, it's the exact same words. And then we'll just change it on the website, this is on the website too, but that doesn't take time for the board.
Any questions on...
No, I think it makes 12 cents and makes it easier to manage.
I move approval of both ordinance changes as presented.
Second?
All in favor?
Alright.
And I want to show those to Sally, so that she can get them. I have a third ordinance change that I would like to request that has to do with the communications tower. I contacted Sally a couple of weeks ago because the proposed tower is going to exceed our ordinance limitations. So I asked Sally if there were, there might be an exception for public safety reasons. And she said, "Our ordinance currently does not allow that, but it's reasonable and other municipalities have that kind of language to allow a communications tower to, you know, be a different height." So I would like to have her write the language for that ordinance change so that when it comes time for them to read you the application, that would be in place.
So with that, shall we direct you to pursue this?
Next time, can we see the line of...
Yeah.
Right, well, this is something I just talked to John about today.
I know, I understand that, but we tell the audience, so I want to make sure we follow the same policies and procedures for everybody.
Right, well, these weren't on the agenda either.
Right, so we ask you to continue to pursue that? Present it?
Yeah, I'll have Sally write the language, she could ask me if I wanted her to do that, I said I would run it by the board.
So do we need a motion for that?
So...
Do we need a motion?
Never hurts to have one.
Yes.
Can you, can you actually make a motion outside of...
I do definitely direct, yes, the town attorney to pursue appropriate language for a communications tower exceeding the current town ordinance limits. Does that make sense?
Well, I wanted something, because we need to put it on the warrant.
Oh, and to have this...
Have all the ordinance, ordinance...
Well, we did the other two.
Yes, and to have this ready for a presentation on the town line. Kristine, what's the height that they're proposing?
180 feet.
What is it, is it 180 feet? What's our current height?
150. And they said that's really a minimum, but they want to...
Is that the only thing that you're changing, are you going to be getting rid of the setback rules and everything else to those ordinance? Because I haven't heard about this, so it'd be nice to hear what's going on.
Right, I'm going to see what Sally comes up with, I think it's a simple exception for public safety. But I will talk with Sally about that.
But there is a setback requirement in here or...
Right, she will leave you that.
If it falls over, so...
Right, I don't know what will happen with that.
I actually am going to move that we table this until we see the information.
You have another question?
I, I think we should table it, because sheriff needs this, the town needs to tell him, right?
Yeah, I need, I need to be able to contact the town attorney to get language that she offered to write.
And from what I've seen of the proposals, there's no issue with a setback. Again, I'm just saying, the first two things we talked about, I saw on the agenda, the third one I didn't, I want to make sure that we start...
No, actually, the, you're going to be done right here. I know, but one of the other ordinance changes was not on it.
Okay, okay.
These are exceptions because of the time on to meet town meeting requirement.
Well, we need to do a better job of this and not be doing it the last minute because other things that don't get through and then all of a sudden I throw in things, so it almost feels like we're choosing, we're, we're being, I just don't want it to seem like we're bringing one ordinance over another.
I think we need to establish, I'm with you on our procedural guideline that we seem to fall out of, yeah.
We're in a, however, at this point, we are in a position where decisions have to be made and we want to have the new tower go in and we need to facilitate it as expeditiously as possible.
We're not saying we're not going to facilitate, I think what we're trying to do is establish...
Let's work about...
Was it done?
Let's do one thing at a time, there's, there's a true time crunch for this particular issue. Then let's work on making sure that the process is the same, but let's not do the same, the two things at once.
When is the plan to start first?
We can start next week or does, first meeting after town?
When's the town?
Tower.
I believe in discussions in the budget hearings meeting, because they hope to start sometime in the fall.
So we have plenty of time to...
They've already asked to be on the planning board agenda.
But it takes a while to gear up and to plan it out. And this has been discussed at other board meetings, this tower. John Dean has stated it's a big benefit to the town, it's going to communicate to those, it's going to help a lot.
We're not saying, we're not against it.
But this has been discussed previously and this is not just a, it's more of a safety issue for the town and the area.
We're, I'm concerned about the procedural issues we have in the town, generically.
Well, in that case, you're also rushing to put the other ordinance changes through at the same time, those are being rushed through.
But they're on the agenda.
And that was kind of what I was expressing with the timing, because the tower is also a land use ordinance change, so it will need to follow the same timeline.
So in order to get this done and to allow the county to continue its planning, though it's, it is expeditious to get it done as soon as possible.
Or we can hold off on all the time and have a special town meeting two weeks after regular town meeting. Will that work for the county? Do you have any idea?
No idea.
Joel?
Yeah, I think it's, it's, this whole process is going to take a couple of years, but if we have to continue to search for sites, and that's what it boils down to. The sites that we have were recommended and kind of vetted by RCM out of the, they're the contractor and and so every time that we step back on that, it's just going to require...
We're not changing the site, we're changing how we're approving how we're going to change the site.
Well, if, if you don't change the ordinance...
We're not saying that we're not going to change the ordinance, we're saying how timely the ordinance is.
But that leaves the county at this point, if this is...
Yeah, we're not going to do anything if...
We can't do it. Further site visits have to be made, further exploration seems to be made if we don't get this done in a timely manner.
Yeah, I mean, everything will be put on pause.
But this hasn't gone into the planning board yet?
No.
Well, no, we needed, we needed an application to be submitted before. And Mike Carter just reached out to John and then asked if it was timely to maybe submit an application again for the planning board. But it didn't seem like appropriate timing yet.
And I'm not saying that it wouldn't get approved, I'm just saying, I know nothing of this at this very moment.
So Kathy, we have two motions on.
I, I will rescind my, my motion. I am okay with it moving forward, but I, I think we need to have... I think we need to have a procedural meeting, for sure, I'm happy with that. I am seconding Abby's motion.
Okay, all in favor?
That's the last land use proposal proposed change.
Alright, business item number two, we need to amend the proposed by the marine resource board and the town clerk for consideration. I have one. And then...
One of the... I don't know why there's so much red on it.
Can I see your red because mine is...
There's one that's, one that's clean.
This is the first time I've seen it.
So there's two forms of red, red that's aligned for...
Oh, I'm sorry, is I have that myself.
Red that's just red and it's not red. So make sure of the changes, that's what we...
Yeah, I've just seen a lot of different, I, this is the first time I've seen this, but I just went through it. A lot of environmental changes, yeah.
Like the mountain number.
Except on the, uh, let's see, this is section G5 about the conservation work?
Yep, that was used to be section 6.
Yeah, the formatting is...
Format.
It's not the same anymore.
Wait, I'm confused.
My old ordinance.
There, there should be a correction on plowing for access to the waterfront, that the survival heading and Hennessy Road, Hennessy Road should be changed to Winter Point Road.
Okay.
Where is that headed?
On section G5.
G?
Conservation work would include plowing for access to flats.
What's the name of the road?
Winter Point, two words.
It also should be noted that that is not a town road. So permission is needed granted for individuals to use that road, it's a private road.
And so should we be putting it in there?
It's fine, but it's posted, no trespassing, it's a, it's a family road, it's a private road. I just want it clear that this is not, drive it down and help yourself, it's by permission.
For license, so it should stay in there by permission, access granted by permission?
Definitely, that would be very helpful.
Like, because it's not.
No, we just appreciate that.
But if we're going to put it in there, it needs to be stated, except the access to it as well.
So is permission assumed for license holders or do they have to reach out to somebody?
They still need permission from the family, yes.
I would prefer written permission, permission to be filed with your license.
No.
At the town hall.
We don't have...
We never had an issue with Suzanne, I appreciate that, we never had a problem with that, once he talked to us as a family, then we're all set, but thank you for thinking of that.
Joel, did you get a chance to look at all of them?
I did, I did, there's really nothing substantially changed here. Any question I had, and maybe that's keeping it in line with, it's a question for Carly, I don't know, but when you talk about the student licenses, the, the change that I know also is, we're commercial and they have...
Yeah, that's just clarification because we have recreational and commercial licenses, so students can dig commercially and sell their clams, but...
And that wasn't allowed before?
It was allowed, it just wasn't stated, yeah, there were some holes in the ordinance. So I think, should we, should we change what? I guess Sally will read the language, access granted.
I'll let her know what we're looking to accomplish and then she can suggest language.
Are you happy with everything, Warren?
Yeah, I get into the water testing service for like cleanups, we have happened plowing. And the fact that if there is something else that we, is related to marine resource, if the board can vote on it and figure out any conservation time? You know, like we've done in the past, like fixing the land or, or, you know, anything really, it's done for marine resource. It would be nice if we could just approve it by the board and then that would go ahead and give you conservation time.
And how do you document it?
I think Carla would have.
Carla has a good man.
Yeah, they have a sign up sheet that they go to attend and something like that, so do you document what they, what they did?
There's only a couple of, a special project, it's not...
Yeah, we, we don't have that many special projects, but we do have a few. It's been tough the last few years because we don't have the seed that we used to have, so we're not actually taking seed out and replanning it. We're trying to come up with other opportunities for people to get conservation time, because it's come back to me, I don't know, every year. There's always a handful of people that don't get their time and, and they always come to me the last couple of months and say, "What can I do, what can I do?" It's like, you know, this, this last year, I just said, "No." Basically, I said, "I've done everything I could possibly do." We're going to have surveys this year, we're going to have cleanups, we're going to have, we might work on the land again. We're going to, we're going to do what we can do to get them their time, basically. Last year, I gave them an opportunity of, I think, 40 hours or something, so if they can't get 12 hours in it, should you put something in there like, or, or any other approved activity or?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what we put in there. Other work related to marine resource by maybe recognized and approved by the grants of the majority of marine resource board.
And technically, Warren, you, you have this all planned ahead of time?
We, we set it up, at this point, I gotta send a notice out for everything that we have.
You post it, do you not?
Yeah, and we have to send it out ourselves from town.
You send it out to all license holders and then it's posted.
But I think the more we document, the, when these people come and say, "He didn't give us any," somebody we can say...
Right, I mean, we ran into it this year where there was a few people that were actually lying and I was like, you know, now I got, now I gotta say when I'm moving the land and what we're doing, I gotta send a notice out and it's going to be a trouble, I mean, basically.
We have to say allegedly.
Allegedly lying, yeah, okay.
This is much clearer.
Yeah. There was one other change I would like to make. That was the night time?
Yeah, that's in here too, Warren.
Do you know what section that is?
That is, that's G...
It's on the last page.
The last page E. It's very similar to what Pittsburgh has in their ordinance. At this time of year, between March 15th, uh, between November 15th and March 15th, it gets dark at 4:30, whatever, people will be done by 6:00, even if the temperature is tied up. We don't want people leaving the land before, if it's a road tide, you know, before sunset, before sunrise. We don't want people leaving the land, because we don't want all the neighbors listening to the airboats and everything, so pretty much everybody's agreed with it, so I'd like to initiate that and most people will be in by 6:00 o'clock and hopefully we won't have people leaving the land at 4:00 in the morning.
That is very well appreciated.
Well, no, I know, that's why we're doing it, you know, so...
Thank you, because I know you had to do some work and we really appreciate it. Well, that's, you know, I know we're looking at putting some signs in some of the landings, once this language is approved, I think we should have that specifically on the sign stating the hours and the date so that anyone who's unaware of it can see it before... stating the hours and date so that anyone who's unaware of it can see it before they enter the water.
Yeah, yeah. We got certain people who drive down there and use it as like a truck stop, but I don't know about that.
No, we're going to have those people no matter what. They'll keep typing these rules up as tight as you want. There's always going to be somebody that's.
Not going to listen.
But at least it's posted.
Yep.
Right.
Then it looks like the neighbors are at least seeing.
You want to make the motion?
So, um, I move that the amended changes be made. I'll send to Sally Cox by the town attorney and present it for the town meeting warrant. I'll second that, all in favor?
So should I go to the town meeting?
Of course, everybody should go to town meeting.
Why?
Why do you have a warrant here?
I've been to a bunch of them. It's not my favorite thing to do, but, yeah.
What? You have, we have our, our, what do you call it? Motto reader.
So if these kids are passing and not passing based on.
I don't have a problem going to the town meeting, speaking of.
Okay, and, and some of the guys should come too.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
And the women as well.
Yeah.
I think it's used.
If it doesn't pass by one vote, we can somebody didn't quite understand.
Well, I remember when I was trying to get the vote for, for the, uh, for the town and I actually wanted a bigger vote and they, they said, you can never get anyone that size. And the thing is, we actually need even a bigger vote than that. We really do. Um, but that's down the road. There's more and more housework, I'll be honest.
Right. All right, moving on to this is item number three. The second draft incorporates changes requested at the equal select board meeting. This is a town administrator's job description, second draft.
I move to table this until our town attorney has ample time to review us.
So the town attorney does not tell you what the job duties of the town administrator actual data. The board decides what the job duties are. After you decide what the job duties are, we can send it to the town attorney to make sure that the format is correct.
I am actually not comfortable, I, I, I'm not, I'm moving to not vote on this right now because there's, there's language. I need to, if our town attorney is not going to review this, I need to go over it again word for word because there's plenty of items that were removed from the initial contract.
That's, that was by design. That's why we were rewriting.
Who's designed it?
That's why we were rewriting the job descriptions exam.
But, but Christina, there's things taken out of the job description, like employee reviews that I think are.
It's in there.
But initially, they were just pairing out to an administrator's job and I need to go through.
It's right in there.
At my request to put it back in. So I, I need to look at it, the changes that have been made, is if our town attorney's not going to review this, I'm not comfortable without me going through and seeing the elements that have been removed that I think should stay in your initial.
You said, you said at last week's meeting that you compared them side by side.
Um, under the, under the press that our town attorney had also looked at it. I'm not comfortable with this, with this document.
I move approval of the job description because currently prepared.
And I'm going to second that because at the last meeting, we went over this sentence by sentence and had our opportunity to put our recommendations in here. I don't want to keep whipping this off. She needs a job description.
She has one right now, though. That she has.
I don't have one that, that meets your expectations right now and it is. And I incorporated every single change that you asked me to make last week.
That was in your initial job description?
No, that language was not in my initial job description and we added that language. The job that.
The review wasn't in that description.
If you're going to continue to criticize me in public, which by the way is a liability to the town, you need to show proof.
It's in the documents.
Okay, then provide those documents and highlight.
I'm calling a question.
I, I, I should hold on this.
All in favor? Opposed?
If you would like me to send it to Sally to review the format and the language at the bottom, I would be happy to do that.
Can you also please send the handbook with her?
I will send the handbook after the select board goes through the code of conduct, not the code of conduct, excuse me, the committee policy for the third time. I'll make the changes that Sally is going to need to review for the third time. When the committee policy is done, which the select board promised in January, I will send the HR manual to the town attorney. I would like to have some control vis a vis daily operations about how things get done and it's appropriate.
It's your job.
And this interference needs to stop.
I'm going to move on to our article number four, town administrator's report.
I don't have anything tonight. The only thing I had tonight that I wanted to bring up was about the communications tower.
Future agenda hours, um, the one you just talked about, can we get that put on the next, you said committee?
The committee procedures.
Yes.
And that's beyond, yes. Yes, and it can be on the next agenda and you need to understand that the select board is going to have to come up with changes based on the conversations we had in January before it goes to the attorney. The attorney reviewed it twice already. So it's on the select board to come up with additional language and then it will go to the attorney.
Can you send me another copy?
Yes.
I'm sorry, but I need to ask about coffee.
I'd like one too.
Any public comment? I'm making motion that we adjourn.
Second?
Go Bruins.
I'm all for this.
I'm not really into the basketball. I was playing hockey during basketball season.
Did you hear what the, what's?